Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee meeting of March 20th, 2024. If everyone, please, would stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We do have members who would public comment. We remind you, too, there is a time limit for your comments or the public comments. So first is Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I say who I am again?
Yes, please.
Elizabeth Dagnall, 316 School Street, Whitman. Thank you to the committee for your work all year round, but especially right now. Gross understatement to say that this budgeting stuff is complex, difficult. The district is making strides that are beginning to have positive impact on each and every student, and it is imperative to focus on the need for programs like foreign language at the middle school, robotics at the middle school, as well as keeping the interventions that are currently in place and working. Above all, it is crucial to continue to move the district forward, not backward. As a Whitman resident, I'm painfully aware that our financial landscape cannot be repaired overnight, nor can town-wide budgeting shortfalls be repaired solely by cutting education or pushing the narrative that investing in our students is problematic while all other spending is justified. Please put forth a budget that continues to move the district onward in providing sound educational facilities and programs. Please know that there are parents beyond just myself who support you, who support a budget that does not cut current programs and that continues to move the school district We also do not support the terminology of a school override at a town meeting to fix a problem that is not only residing within the school district. Thank you again for your work, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Justin, you're up next.
Justin Evans, 57, Candlewood Lane, Whitman. We met last year, all three boards, the school committee, Whitman Board of Selectmen, and Hanson Select Board, to talk about using one-time money to balance last year's budget and agreed to do something different this year. And I think that you have. So far, I know that the superintendent has met with each town administrator multiple times going back to July, I think. And I think those have been fairly productive meetings. We've had some back-and-forth dialogue on where the budget's at. I did also say at your budget hearing a couple of weeks ago that Whitman's projecting about $1.2 million in new revenue. What I don't think I said was that if you assess anything above that number, the FinCom has to balance the budget. We have to present a balanced budget to town meeting for the town to vote on, which means that the FinCom's budget will show cuts to other departments. If we only have $1.2 million in new revenue and the assessment from the schools comes in above that, every other department has to get cut to meet that projection. In that scenario, in all likelihood, I think the selectmen, assuming now, but I think the selectmen would present an alternative budget alongside that would show a different number for the schools. And if that happens, likely want to work with you to present an override that would make up that difference. But we're on a time crunch, so the process to put an override forward to the towns, the selectmen will have to vote 35 days before a town election. That deadline is April 12th. So we have about three weeks to decide if we're going to have an override on the ballot. To avoid an override and live within the increases of, you know, Prop 2 and 1/2, it's going to take cuts from everyone, I think, including Hanson's town government as well. So the choice before you guys tonight is, if you think you can live with those cuts, assess a number, you know, closer to the 5% that the towns have both said that they can deal with. If you can't live with those cuts, assess a budget higher than that, but let's set a meeting very soon between the three boards to work out a plan to fund it, likely with an override. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Sean?
Sean Kane, 31, Forest Street. Mr. Farrell used the phrase "moral imperative" last meeting to describe the reasoning behind the use of one-time funds, and I agree with him. I am in the classroom, and I do know what it's like to work with kids who struggled through the pandemic. And to be honest, a number of my students, actually, parents of theirs have died because of the opioid epidemic. A couple, actually, both have died because of the opioid epidemic. So the moral reasoning behind these funds is sound. I agree. But the question I'd ask you to consider tonight is how to raise those funds. In my opinion, in line with Justin, I'd like you to consider, in my opinion, sorry, the best way to do that is to work with the leadership of both towns to coordinate an override for anything above a 5% assessment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Okay. It's a public comment, then. Next is New Business, Student Opportunity Act. George?
No, let's go to Elizabeth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, everybody.
I'm sorry.
Nope, that's fine, Beth. My name is Dipna Thomas. I'm the executive director of Pilgrim Area Collaborative, and Whitman-Hanson has been a longstanding member of our collaborative. Stephen Boyce is wonderful to work with. He represents Whitman-Hanson at all of our board meetings. Many of your students attend Pilgrim Area Collaborative in terms of receiving special education services for one reason or another. Tonight, I am basically asking for approval of continuation of your membership of Pilgrim Area Collaborative and the approval of the collaborative agreement that you received. And the best part is, it costs no money. So, that's a great way considering it's budget night. So, any questions? Did you get to read the collaborative agreement? We have 10-member districts. We offer home services, day program. We are run all year long based on the needs of students that come to us. We do a lot of professional development, program development, so we're in and out of districts all the time. And again, Stephen is a key person. He's been longstanding committee member for a very long time, and he has the history of Pilgrim Area Collaborative, which is always nice. I've been at Pilgrim Area Collaborative for a little over five years now, and it's just nice having people that know all of the history. And he serves on every committee, budget, finance. I think we all know Stephen loves the Bruins, loves cats, loves his family, and it's just, it's wonderful. So anyways, I'm asking for a motion, but really Stephen's asking for a motion if you would support continuation of the membership with Pilgrim Area Collaborative and also the collaborative agreement.
You got a motion, Mr. Boyce?
Tell him.
All right. Who is motioning?
Mr. Boyce.
Okay. Who's second? Second? Okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion? All in favor, please? Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you, Dipna.
Thank you. And Beth, if you want to sign that, I can take it with me and be all set.
Dipna's my favorite educator.
I thought Nikki was.
Don't let any of you get upset with me. Nikki?
I'm talking a lot.
We'll talk later.
Thank you, Dipna. Thank you. Okay. Sorry, I didn't.
No worries.
I saw you smiling, Mr. Squibb. I saw you smiling, and that's what I want. You really am.
All right, folks, so tonight, like we discussed last week, I'm presenting the Student Opportunity Act for Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. This is an act that is passed, it goes into, it goes, puts out through DESI, and we have to do certain things with it. I do believe, I want to let you all know, that everything I'm presenting, we know there's nothing new. At this current time, there's no budgetary impact because it falls through with what it is we've already been doing, and I present, and we presented last week. I'm presenting it in this fashion because it has to go into the portal at DESI, which is extremely cumbersome, and it would not be something that I could easily share with you and that. So this is why I took all the information, all the subtitles, all the headings, and this is why I'm doing what we're doing. If I can do this right, probably turn it on. If I was perfect, like Mr. Kane, I would have had. So the district plan summary. The plan for the district is that we will focus on five student groups, as well as our lowest-performing student list, as described by DESI. And I'll name those groups, next slide. Whitman-Hanson will continue to monitor all of our students, but we will pay particular attention to the identified students that we have chosen as part of our plan. We are committed to our diagnostic paths, high-quality instructional materials, our wind blocks, and also the social-emotional health of all of our students. The goal is for all Whitman-Hanson students to achieve their ability and become responsible young adults. What you see on the next page, and what the SOA makes you do, is you have to choose certain groups that you're going to focus on, and then I'm also giving you some of the data that we've looked at in order to analyze those groups. So the selected groups we've looked at are five. There are approximately up to 12 groups you can choose from. We are choosing students with disabilities, we are choosing our African-American and Black student population, our Hispanic or Latino population, our English learners, and our low-income. I also think it's important to note that some of these groups are part of other groups. For example, you could have a low-income Hispanic student, that's two groups. You could have a student with disability who's Hispanic and also is low-income, that would be three groups. So we're trying to get a wide swath of our student body and what we want to do and what we want to put forth for improvement. What we've analyzed to come up with our measures, we've analyzed our diagnostics, what you all learned about last week and continually hear about, we've talked about MCAS and the growth percentiles of our students, we've talked about the accountability targets from DESI. So DESI is making us fill out a form, and DESI is making us follow their pattern. So there's not a lot of individual choice in all of this. We're also looking at the percentage of chronic absenteeism, percentage of chronic out-of-school suspensions, and the percentage of five-year graduation rates. A sample of some of the data that we've looked at is on the next page, and I will screw this up more. A sample is what's called a district heat map. District heat map is just one of the things we look at, but it takes a cross-section of the student groups we're talking about, and you get to analyze where our students are and where we need to move forward. Basically, if you look at this, it's an example, but everything in deep maroon would be an area of concern that we have to look at. So our deep maroons, in this sense, guided us. Then we also cross-reference that with what we know in our district based on our diagnostics, and we came up with the groups that we're trying to target. The question then becomes is, what are we doing especially for them? Well, the goal would be to have three-year targets for improving their achievement according to DESI. DESI has given us the targets, and they've also given us our lowest-performing student groups. By definition, and by the way the SOA is written, we have to follow that, and we have to raise those targets. Basically, the way we're raising those targets is continuing to look at what it is we're doing now, and I'll give you some examples on the next slide of how we're doing that, continue with everything that we're doing, monitoring these students, and then putting in additional layers of support, of scaffolding, if you would, so that we can follow. DESI gives you, you have to do it for three years, they say you can do it for three additional years. At this point in time, we're only choosing the three years. The reason why is that in the 30 years I've been in education, six years is a really long time in the state of education, so we're focusing on the first initial three and trying to move forward. I did not provide you with our lowest groups and those students because I didn't bear, it wasn't fair to them to share all that information, but we do have the list of students that we're looking at, and they are representative of the five groups that we are also looking at. So we know we're on solid ground and a solid path to move forward. If you look at family stakeholder engagement, these are the ways in which we check, see, talk to, engage with the community, and we've done that through these groups. However, I did pull the school committee hot spotlights because I wanted to let you folks know that the ability that we do that now is actually something that garners quite a bit of joy, not only for the kids that come here and get to present, and what it does for them to learn how to public speak, to learn how to get over their nerves, to learn how to interact with adults, to learn how to be on cable TV, but what it also does and highlights the fact that we are here for students, and everything we do should be about the students. So that's why I wanted to highlight the school committee's findings. But there's a lot of people who tell me, hey, that's pretty good for, I mean, of the maybe seven that watch school committee, but like four of those I've run into, and they say how great it is that you actually do that and highlight what kids do in their, in the schools. The next one is examples of evidence-based programs we're using to address disparities and outcomes. Every title that I give you on the slide is the title of a section of the SOA. But we do have, and we continue to have, high-quality instructional materials, HQIM by DESI. We have our eye-ready math programs in K-8. We have our eye-ready math and reading diagnostics in K-8, which we talked about last week. We use Houghton-Mifflin inter-reading for K-5. We use, this year, for next year, excuse me, coming in, we're actually going to look at the Melrose Social Studies curriculum for K-5. And we're going to bring that in very, very slowly, but Melrose is actually the only town's curriculum, there's one other pay one, but it's the only town's curriculum that DESI has said that's applicable, that schools can use if they want because it's got their seal of approval. So a lot of people using it, one of the reasons why is because it is free at this point in time. So we're going to look at that, and how we're going to do that next year is that we're going to do, we're going to ask people to supplement one of the topics they talk about in social studies at the elementary school, and then try this piece to cover that topic, see how it goes, and see where we can go from there. Very small steps we're going to take with that. We also use Houghton-Mifflin for inter-reading for grades 5 to 8. And again, we talked about last week Kendall Hunt's illustrative math for algebra 1, 2, and geometry. Other evidence-based things that we use to help all students, because we're going now from the pre-K to the K to the 18- to 22-year-old students also, we use what's called SONE, SONE is special ed and small-group instruction for phonics. We use Hegarty. We use Hegarty in our kindergarten classes, which is another phonics-based program to start the foundations of reading, but that is a whole-class option. We use what's Ufly. Ufly came out of the University of Florida Institute, and it's actually hosted by, not hosted, but the developer of it, and the largest person who invested in it was James Patterson, the author. So that is now research-based, and we piloted that at the end of last year, and we instituted it this year. And we also use Lexia Power, Lexia, which is an online program for power-up in Core 5 to improve reading skills for all ages. We're also doing a few different things that tie in the youth through high school. We have three evidence-based programs that we're happy with and responsible with, and we're going to move forward with. This year, we had a culturally-responsive structural review at the high school. We brought in Dr. Colin Rose. We've been working with him for two years. We've had PD, we've had training, and we've looked at the structures in place to say, do they benefit all students? Not do they benefit a majority of the students, but do they benefit all? We did this through DESI, and next year, that structural review is going to happen at every single school. The goal of that is to bring about change. One of the biggest changes we had is looking not only at the discipline handbook, but is now looking at the wind block in the high school because that came from that. Also talks about student voice. We've tried to have an increase in student voice. Next year, we're going to do that for the whole district. Another thing we did, we have a high school stat team review process to mirror what the other schools have done. Stat team is called a student assistance team, student-teacher assistance team, and what that does is that they take a look at students who people feel may be in need, they try to come up with solutions to help them, incremental pieces, that could be social-emotional, that could be academic, that could be home life, that could be domestic issues, whatever the issue is, and we try to move forward with that. The reason why the high school is up next year is because we've done it with Seaside Consultants and Dr. Kevin Hutchinson already at the elementary in the middle. So the last outgrowth is the high school. So the high school started our structural review, we're moving back down in that way, and then for the stat team process, we're moving up with the high school for that next year. And the last one is, what we touched upon last week, is to help our scores in math. You saw our math, there was a lot of red. And that could be because kids disengage, that could be because we have IXL, and it's not the best for 9th and 10th grade, but we're also involved in the Instructional Leadership Institute through DESI, and this year, we're also involved in their next phase of that, which is the Instructional Prioritization Institute through DESI, which basically you get around with a bunch of people way smarter than me, probably as smart as Nikki, I guess. We bring a group, and then what we do is we try to make sure we focus on our priorities. So making this part of the SOA is how do we improve math for not only all students of Whitman-Hanson, especially for those five marginalized groups that are suffering that we showed you on the second slide. The last thing that we'll talk about, see and need, is that I would like this group to motion to approve the SOA because that's one of the things we need to do. And then I actually have to make sure I can physically load it and pass all the testing gems so I can get it in there by the first rate. Thanks.
I'll make the motion that we approve this unfunded mandate of Student Opportunity Act as presented.
I second that.
Okay. Comments? Questions? Don?
Can you sort of clarify the connection of this requirement to the actual Student Opportunity Act legislation and as it's connected to Chapter 70 and how they're related?
Probably not.
Okay.
But I can, I can tell you what I'm supposed to do. This is, so the Student Opportunity Act is in its second version. So the first one was three years ago, and that was tied to Chapter 70, and every school had to do it, every school in Commonwealth did it, Charles School did it, they all did. It was supposed to be tied to Chapter 70 and saying, if they, I think, if they identified the needs that you have, you may in fact receive more Chapter 70 money. At that time, if my memory serves, because we were in held harmless at such a large rate, we never qualified to receive more Chapter 70 money. However, we still did the same thing, and that's what brought in some of these evidence-based research things that we did. That was like the inception, that was the impetus from a post-COVID world in order to begin our interventions and things of that nature. This next rendition is three years later. This will go from '24 to '27. They say that it's still supposed to do the same thing, and that there are districts and towns that receive hundreds of thousands, some that receive none, some that receive millions. The issue with that might be, as I've heard, is that sometimes that monetary number changes every year. So I know there's some local towns that receive a couple million or a couple hundred thousand, and then this year they receive none. But I know it is supposed to be tied to funding. I just, it wasn't necessarily, it has not necessarily shown up in excess funding or extra funding in the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District since its inception.
So, okay. Thank you for clarifying. And I, you're certainly right on track, and I'm glad that we're talking about this, and I think it doesn't get enough attention, and talk about the Student Opportunity Act when it was passed in 2019, because it was a six-year phase-in, so that's the three in three years that you're talking about, and this is the fourth of six years. I was on a Learning Lunch webinar with MASC last Friday. It's free and open to anyone to, again, talk about the Student Opportunity Act, and it reinforces that it was designed to increase the foundation budget connected to Chapter 70, and that's driven by enrollment. And they stress that the intent of the law for the Student Opportunity Act is being fulfilled. So yes, depending on your enrollment and depending on other factors within your district of low-income students and English-language learners, that you can be receiving more aid. And I just wanted to sort of refer back to our budget booklet on the hold harmless page because we are identifying it. You know, we've seen that the chart goes down dramatically, and that's because the Student Opportunity Act is working. If we look at the actual numbers, we were hold harmless of 4.3 million in FY '23, and then in one year, we went down to 500,000 in hold harmless. So the Student Opportunity Act applied $4,000 more, I'm sorry, $4 million more in state aid to Whitman-Hanson. But because we had already been in hold harmless, we didn't see any dollars in the checkbook, but it's working, and there's two more years of implementation, which means they keep raising the rates of the cost of education so that we can realize that. So enrollment is just extremely key in one of those determining factors. Also, one of the drivers of that is the inflation rate, and there's a lot of talk right now about advocating with your legislature, and we can all do this, or superintendent can do this if he's the liaison with the legislature, because the co-executive director of MAS S testified about requesting an additional 2.58% to the inflation factor of the Chapter 70 Foundation Budget Formula, and that could get us closer to more aid.
Thank you. Glenn?
Have other towns done this?
Yeah, every town has.
Have we done it? This will be the first?
No, this will be the second three-year.
Second three-year, okay.
So we did it three years ago. Other people who were working for us at that time put it together.
Okay. And you've seen these numbers go up?
Yeah. All these numbers have gone up, but there is still his work to do.
Oh, yeah. The dropout rate for low-income is three times higher than all students.
Correct. And then, and the dropout rate, I believe, is 29 point, excuse me, the low-income rate is 29.2, I believe, and as a result, that does play a role. So one of these things that you have to do now is actually sort of take apart and get into the high school and the reasons why so that that's part of the structural review that we're doing so that we can say, do all students, every student of every group, get what they need and try to work towards that?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Who else? Who else? Okay. Could I have a motion then?
You have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have one. It's been so long. Do I have a vote? And does it need to be? It can be just regular.
Just regular, yeah.
Okay. All in favor, please? Okay. Unanimous.
Thanks, Judge.
Okay. All right. Next up is the calendar.
So we did make that change and put that half-day on early release date on September 3rd instead of Friday, August 30th, to help the town of Hanson out as a half-day because it is a municipal election. We will keep the kids separate from the gym that day at Hanson Middle School. That election does not affect anybody else in the district at that point. Hanson Middle will dismiss at normal dismissal time at, I think, 11 o'clock.
Motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Second.
Any questions? Commissions, deletions?
I have a question. Did the Hanson Town Park ask to not have school that day?
Correct.
I just, the last time we did this, we had a ton of very angry parents. I think it's a huge, I know you guys already talked about this, but I think it's a huge security risk. I know that you say you can keep things separate, but I'm going to have two kids at that school, and it makes me very nervous that there are going to be people in and out of that building because anybody can go in. When I went and voted, I don't, I'm sure there was a police officer there, but I don't recall seeing them. I worry about the backlash we're going to receive by doing this, and I know that it's a Hanson thing, I know that we voted for schools, I get that completely. I just, our past incidents give me pause about this.
Noted. I mean, I, I'm looking at the calendar, and that's the day that, I mean, we can extend the school year, but that's problematic, and I don't think we, as a district, want to separate one school and close one school, so.
Miss Brad?
Beth, I'm sorry.
Oh. I just recognized Brad.
Yeah, I had my hand raised.
Where you did touch base with public safety.
Yeah, we will have officers there, yeah. I mean, and what we are doing, one more thing, is closing that gate between the gym. Yeah, so, I mean.
Auditorium, too.
Everything on that side of the building would be off-limits for kids that day, for that half-day.
Okay. Don?
December 23rd on the calendar, I don't have it in front of me because it was from last week. That's a no-school day?
It's a contractual no-school day in the teacher's contract. If it falls on a Monday or Tuesday, December 23rd is a day off.
Okay. Fair enough.
So we've looked at that day as well.
What's that?
I said, we looked at that day when we ran across this.
Fighting about that date for 10 years.
Then.
No, 22nd.
Yeah. If we went through this before and there's uncertainty about access to the school on that day, then it may make sense to move the last day of school.
Yeah, I just, I don't know. I just know I was on the receiving end of emails and conversations at the fields because I live there, and being in a school myself, it makes me nervous significantly. That's all. I'm from Hanson as well, and I received most comments about anything, from anything to do with school committee about that subject from parents, honestly. The same thing, just safety concerns, what their kids, so I'm second to none with that. So I know it's tough all around, but there are great concerns. So I don't know if that just means more police officers, or I don't know what that means or how it's going to land.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead.
I just want clarification. So September 3rd is an election day at all schools, a couple of schools, one school?
Hanson Middle School.
Hanson Middle School. to do with school committee about that subject from parents, honestly. The same thing, just safety concerns, what their kids. So I'm second to that really, so I know it's tough all around, but there are great concerns. So I don't know if that just means more police officers or, I don't know what that means or how it's going to land.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
I just want clarification. So September 3rd is an election day.
Correct.
At all schools, a couple of schools, one school?
Hanson Middle School.
Hanson Middle School.
Yeah, that's where they vote.
Yeah, I know that. I'm just.
Whitman votes at the town hall.
But then the November election is a.
We closed everything because it's an election day. We expect heavy.
Is they're voting at all schools or just the middle?
No, they're just voting at the middle school, but we expect.
Why is it different?
Heavy, heavy traffic on a presidential election. Less traffic.
Only at one school, though?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Right.
Then it should be the same. Still one school, one election, the same number of possible voters.
It's been shown.
I get it that there's going to be way more on the fourth.
It's been shown not to, the numbers.
I totally get that. Then, I don't know. I'm just.
So the option, again, that we talked about is moving the last day of school till the 17th. And with one snow day, we end on the 20th, which is a Friday. And with two snow days, we go till the 23rd. And with five, we'll go to the 28th.
Wait, if you end on the 17th, one snow day puts you on the 18th.
Right, that would, and then.
You said the 20th. Because 19th is the 19th.
Right. So if we go to.
You still have wiggle room. Honestly, you still have wiggle room. I don't know. I just, I can't, I, I, there are crazy people out there. And I know it's a small election, but to Glenn's point, it's still an election and there are going to be parents who are going to be furious that we're doing this. And like Michelle said, other than, I can't think of another issue that I received so many emails and phone calls about than having the school open on a voting day. It's kid safety, it's staff safety. You think about people voting, driving in and out of there, and then parents are going to be leaving, picking up their kids. I just, I think you have wiggle room at the end of the day, at the end of the year. I think, I think you do. I mean, 19th is 19th, but it puts you at the 17th. It's just one extra day for the safety of kids.
When does the calendar have to be certified by?
It doesn't, but the sooner it's certified.
This is something we should have an actual discussion about. This is the first. I've heard of it, you know?
Well, this is the second reading of the calendar.
I do remember before, we just kind of read it, but we didn't discuss this day. This is the first day I'm hearing about this particular day. Well, so.
And the other recommendation I would make is, is other schools have moved to going to school on Good Friday.
Which our kids at Hanson are always shared.
And I would make that suggestion potentially. You're pointing, Chris.
Just to follow up with Glenn, this is, this is what we're doing so we can resolve
it.
This is the discussion? Okay, fine.
And you could, we could move to not vote this today. Again, there's nothing.
That's what I kind of meant.
There's nothing there. We can always discuss it at a different point.
So as chair, I'd like to move it to our next meeting if possible, where tonight we're kind of busy and.
Can we just give the parents?
Draw my motion.
But what I would say to parents is maybe look at maybe affirming the first day of school because more people care about the first day of school, making vacation plans now than the last day of school next year in 25. You know what I mean? But if we can pretty much say, the first week of school looks pretty good, like kids are going to be here on the 28th. So plan your vacations, kids are going to come to school that week. And towards the end of the year, we can have further discussion. I have no issues with that. It's more or less that I get the phone, but when are you going to establish a calendar? Because we got camps, we got this and daycare and things like that. So.
Yeah.
But if those are topics on the table, I would look at Good Friday and I would look at the end of the year. The 23rd is the issue that used to be a day to play, but because of the way the holiday, the winter holiday falls this year, it's a Monday. And by looking at the teacher's contract, if it falls on a Monday or Tuesday, it's a day off.
One more. Quick. Once the calendar is certified, we cannot go back and then?
Yes, you can.
You can always go back.
Let's certify now and discuss that day another time.
You can always do that. It's up to you guys.
That's what I was going to suggest because we could have further discussion about that, just certify as is and change. And then, would you like to add?
And then, and then it can be out there, sorry.
Right, where people can come in and, I would love to hear what people have to say.
That's what I mean.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
My motion's withdrawn.
Okay.
Bring it back. Motion to certify.
All right, do I have a second?
I think it was our removal stage. Was it you that?
No, I withdrew my second when you withdrew the motion.
So now we have a new one.
Glenn's looking for a second.
He's looking for a second. I'm redoing it now, recertifying it.
With discussing that particular day later in the future.
We don't need to vote that.
We don't really need to.
Just put it on the next agenda.
Yeah, we'll just put it on the next, okay?
Works for me.
All right. It's fine. Okay. Next, we have field trip requests. Whitman Middle School, eighth grade class trip to New York City and Philadelphia, and the Hanson Middle School trip to Washington, D.C.
Motion to accept as presented.
Second.
Any questions? Those have been attached. We had those last, last week. So, no questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Okay.
Oh, got it. Oh, I'm still doing my paperwork.
Sorry.
Moving for the budget discussion?
Yes.
So tonight, we'll be looking to certify a number to the towns on the assessment. And I actually, Jen has language for each of you once we get to the motion to certify so that anyone on the committee can make that motion to certify an assessment to the towns. But before we get into that, I just want to go over a couple of things. I did make an error in, on the February 7th presentation around grade six at Hanson Middle.
Five.
Yeah, grade six at Hanson. There were six sections listed as far as six, six sections of staff. It's actually five. So we never added an additional staff member there. It's just, it's five and it's been five. So I just wanted to let you folks know that. The other topic that's come up from a few folks in the communities is non-mandated transportation. And for the six years that I've, this is my sixth budget, we've talked about non-mandated transportation. So tonight, we are going to ask, or I will ask, and it's been on our sheets, I'll ask the committee to entertain a motion to support non-mandated transportation tonight. The cost to Hanson, using the methodology that we have, by mile, is $47,876. And Whitman's assessment for non-mandated is $181,000, $181,780. As we know, and maybe clarifying for some folks on the committee who are new and/or people in town, non-mandated transportation isn't part of our school budget or assessments. It's a, it's a separate line in the communities and the towns actually vote that. And we ask the voters to support that. Since this is a hot topic, I asked Karen Villanueva, who's been our Director of Transportation since I've been here, so six years, and she was an assistant for many, many years prior to that. And I just want to share some of her thoughts to the committee about how that might impact either our finances or our community. So in removing, she said, I apologize for the lengthy email. Karen's not a very wordy person. She's brief and to the point, but she, she kind of said what she said. There are several implications if this happens. First, we currently run 17 buses at the high school. We only have four non-mandated students for the high school. This means we can't lower the fleet below 17 buses. If we remove non-mandated transfer, non-mandated students from Whitman Middle, Hanson Middle, Conley, Duval and Indian Head, this would only change the busing tiers and we have four tiers of assessment for buses. I can only guess, and she highlighted guess, by the current number of students that are at Hanson Middle School, buses would drop down from eight to seven, meaning only seven would report there, from eight to five in Whitman. Indian Head would drop from nine to seven and Conley would drop from eight to two and Duval from eight to two. So right now, I have eight buses running because of those tiers. One bus out of those 17 might just do one tier, which is a little bit more expensive. If this involves both Whitman and Hanson, this would result in restructuring busing tiers, not eliminating buses. And again, an approximate guess is a savings to the assessment of the towns of between $240,000 and $260,000 right now. I can't give an exact number because of unanticipated enrollments making the 75% capacity. Remember, we need to, in district, have a 75% capacity on our buses and actually getting the buses to school on time. And she said if Hanson is on board, because right now they have no walkers because they have no sidewalks. This is the point that she wants to stress and I don't live in the communities. I only go there sometime, or to the schools during drop-off and pickup sometimes and see what it is. With the additional parents picking up and students walking, this may impose a huge impact on student drop-off and pickup at each schools. Our schools are not equipped to handle the, to handle the additional impact this will have. I can't guess how long dismissals may take. Estimated example, Conley has 351 students on non-mandated right now. So if, if we want to say out of those 351, we will add 200 cars and 151 walkers, we're adding 200 cars to Conley. Duval is 337. Split that again, you know, you might be adding 200 cars and 137 walkers. Whitman Middle School has 251, Hanson Middle has 71 and Indian Head has 136 students. She's thinking out loud, if 300, 200-plus parents are picking up at Conley School, Route 18 may be backed up, Forest Street would be gridlocked and High Street would be gridlocked. Duval doesn't have any space to house additional cars. South Ave would be, would be gridlocked. How long would it take to get out of Whitman Middle School? If you live on Forest Street, Hart and Ross Drive, and I don't know where that is, High Street, Corral Ave, South Ave, Regal Street, Apollo Road, and have to get out of your home, you might not be able to do that during drop-off and pickup. A few examples of designated walkers for Conley School would now be as far as Pine Haven Drive, Lance Ave, Burton Ave, Harvard Street, Fieldstone Street, the Toll House condos, Washington Terrace, both sides of Route 27 and 18 and 14, Old Mansion Lane, Sportsman Trail, 855 Temple Street, including Myrtle Ave Apartments and Mary Day Deb Care. Few examples of walkers for Duval would be as far as Washington Street, both sides, Commercial Street, Broad Street, the Marble Ave Apartments, Park Ave, Alden Street, all neighborhoods on both sides of Route 58 up to Lyons Lane and Bradford, Plymouth Street, both sides of 27, Temple Street, Franklin Street, adding in crossing over the railroad tracks at the dangerous four-way intersection of Pleasant Street, South Ave and Franklin Street. We also would need the cost of additional crossing guards that aren't necessarily in the school budget but are in the town budget. So in considering that piece, those are the pieces, not only the financial cost, it's the, the human factor of getting to school on time and coming home. Right now, and Assistant Superintendent slash Principal Pharaoh of the Duval School was there at dismissal at Duval and Duval dismissal starts with our eight buses at 310, 315, and the last parent is picking up their student at 335 as teachers are walking out the door. Correct?
Yeah, and even at Whitman Middle, because we all know that the Department of Transportation took down that, that stop sign, that light that used to be at Corral Ave and the old Muffler Master, I don't know what's there now. But I was going there this morning for a 7:30 meeting and it's just, I got stopped at Cumberland's and it was just inching, 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 inching. I mean, really, if you look at Forest Street, these are one of those things where I think police and fire would have to be involved because do you have to make Forest Street a one-way? And then who, who's going to be the crossing guard on, on 18 and Forest Street at the end of the day to try to get people out and kids out? I just think it's something that we need to think about from a gridlock standpoint and a human dynamic standpoint. Because for those students who had students at the Whitman Middle School, everybody always says the kids are on their bikes going in and out of the traffic as the school leaves. If you add 300 or 250 or so students to that, you're putting a lot of traffic in the town. But that's not my decision, so I just wanted to let you know what it looks like.
So again, it was, it came to my attention, some folks have brought it up. I wanted, before we get into the assessment conversation, I wanted folks to know, Stephen, you had asked about non-mandated busing last week.
Correct.
Just what it is, what happens. And again, it's a different line item on the budget. It's not in the school budget. We ask the towns to fund that in a different line item.
Okay. And I'd like to speak to it, too, before I go to everybody else. I have had to pick up my grandchildren at Conley and Duval. And let me tell you, it is not pleasant. It takes forever. Because you get in a line, or if you can get into the line, once you get in the line and you, you know, weave your way through, there's just no space, you know. If you've been to those two elementary schools, especially Duval, there is no space to have cars come in and out. So personally, you know, to me, it would be a nightmare. But that's just me. Fred?
Quick question. Does that address the sex offenders in houses that we can't have children walking by?
We haven't looked at, I mean, haven't gotten that.
So that could add additional buses as well?
Sure. Well, it, yeah. I mean, it's, the timing, the time piece is problematic, too. Just getting kids to school on time because of traffic is going to be an issue and then how we reroute. And I don't know if we're going to have exact tiers. I don't know. But kind of rolling it over, because this is a conversation that we've had, and that's the reality. We adjusted our, how we calculate that. And there's some discussion more in the regional agreement, how we do that for mandated busing and how we go give it to the state. However, this is specifically for the students that live within, you know, less than a mile and a half.
So I'd like to make the motion that we support non-mandated busing to be assessed to the towns as was originally presented in our budgets.
Second.
Okay, further discussion. Don?
I have a question on the letter from Karen. She indicated 17 buses at the high school and we can't, what was her words? We can't go lower. We can't lower that. And then, you know, there was a statement made that our schools aren't equipped to handle the additional impact. I, I know area towns are not busing kids who live similar distance from the schools. So I think there's an opportunity here to, to one, maybe talk to some of the area schools and area towns and see how they're doing it and how the impact is to them. Because in the issue of kids on their bikes and riding, you know, in and out of traffic, that's not acceptable at all. But it also ties into last week when I talked about safe routes to schools. There's a Massachusetts department that will help us. They will come out and evaluate. I actually got a phone call back from the representative today who handles the Southeast Region. She was happy to talk to me. I'll be happy to forward it on to the committee for further review and decision on how, as a committee, choose to move forward. But they come out for free and they do evaluations and they do traffic studies and they have grant programs. So there's opportunity here. And if, if the traffic is so bad around the schools now, we should be asking, are these families that we are, or the town is paying to have a seat available on a bus? And yet they're driving if the traffic is that bad. And that's one of the studies that Safe Routes to School will also do. They'll work with a free survey and ask people, what cross-section of streets do you live near? So they don't even have to give their address. And how do you get to school? And then they do a visual map to assess how people are traveling to and from their home to school. I just think there's an opportunity here for savings. And if we get to the budget piece and we're looking to save $250,000, maybe this is an opportunity. But if we can find out information, again, about the buses, that it's 17 and it can't go lower, I'd like to get more information on why it can't go lower. Because actually, if we look at the budget booklet on buses, we're talking about high school kids. I mean, we can add up how many high school kids there are, right? There's four, you said, non-mandated. So we're talking about the mandated kids. We have to bus them. So there is 909. Eight, 923, sorry. 923. So 17 buses for 900 kids.
George, did you want?
Well, I just, I was just going to echo what Don said. There are four non-mandated students at the high school. So as a result of the regional agreement, we provide right now a seat for those people. So that's why the number of buses have to start where it is. It's also a geographical distance issue. Because if you put, if you, if you make less buses for students, you then have to pick them up earlier and then you will then have kids waiting for buses longer or not because of geographical distance, especially in Hanson as such, that'll happen. It'll then have a ripple effect to the other schools. So it's just things to consider.
Yes, Hillary?
So I teach in a district that they charge for busing. It's not regional district. But I can speak to the traffic piece. Jeff, maybe you can speak to the traffic piece, too. A lot of, it's a high school, so kids drive, but there are buses. But a lot of parents drive their kids, a lot, a considerable amount, because there's a cost. And because they share buses with the middle school, to George's point, that ripple effect, kids are on the bus, if they have to take the bus, they're on the bus for 45 minutes to an hour in the morning. So it's a long bus ride in the morning. If you don't, so I contractually have to be there by 7:20 in the morning. If I am not hauling down learning lane by 7:10, I will get stopped at the hockey rink. And I don't know if you guys know where the Hob and Lock Hockey Rink is in relation to Pembroke High School, but it's a mile easily. And it is, so the implications of traffic are real. We have, we have significant, it's changed a little bit, but we used to have significant tardy problems with students who drove or parents who dropped their kids off. I sometimes see Jeff in the parking lot at 7 o'clock dropping his kids off. School doesn't start until 7:30. So it makes kids get there way earlier than they need to be. So it's cutting in on their other things and sleep and, and, you know, other things like that. So it is a real issue. For me, I think that the, the walking on busy roads, if I think about Hanson, kids at the Hanson Middle School are going to be walking on Route 58. And I know they do on half-days anyway, but there are some kids who don't, who would probably be in this non-mandated because their parents don't feel it is safe for them. because their parents don't feel it is safe for them to do so. Now they're not necessarily given the choice. Same with Indian Head, it's Route 58. My kids would be walkers to Indian Head, because I would be in that area. I live on Borland Drive. Where are they going to go? They're going to walk on Route 58 at 8 o'clock in the morning when people are flying and they're on their cell phones? I don't think so, you know? So these are things that, you know, I just talked about the calendar and about safety of kids, and, you know, I think that that's the prevailing issue, the safety of the kids. I understand trying to save money, but it shouldn't be at the cost of the safety of the kids.
Oh, you can take that motion.
Okay, so Fred, you want to speak to your motion?
To echo what Hillary was saying, the safety of kids. This is also outside of our operating budget. It's also a line that has come down substantially since we changed the formula around. So the towns from three years ago are seeing approximately a 50% reduction. I think they're happy to see that. And at the same time, they pay for crossing guards. Who knows if they have to provide additional crossing guards? And you want to make sure that every kid is going to be safe in walking to school and getting to school. So, you know, the non-mandated is a no-brainer for me. Jeff, you looking for a separate motion for that?
I think you did already.
Yeah, you already gave, I can read the official.
Just so we don't have, I mean, because if the committee wants to look at that, we have to skew where we're at. If that's going to be a cut, it's an assessable cut in the assessment, because if non-mandated comes out of the piece for the towns as a separate line item, then I'm looking at different tiers and looking at a change of maybe 260,000 of reimbursable funds from the mandated side, because we'd have to address those tiers.
It's not worth it, in my opinion.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Okay, and that motion is, I'll read the official, how it's going to read, okay? Hanson, FY '25 Hanson Non-Mandated Transportation Assessment. Move to certify the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District fiscal year 2025 non-mandated transportation assessment for the town of Hanson in accordance with the PK-12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4 E2 and Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16B, at, and it would be $47,876. And, let me just, and for Whitman, the non-mandated transportation assessment, I move to set the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District fiscal year 2025 non-mandated transportation assessment for the town of Whitman in accordance with the PK-12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4 E2 and Mass General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16B, at Okay, those were your two amounts.
Those are the motions.
Yep.
Just need a second.
We did that. We had a motion and a second. Okay? All in favor? Raise your hands, please. Okay, and against? Okay, one opposed. So that is passed, so we have that number.
You keep those.
Have that number.
So moving on to the regional school assessment, I gave you some figures last week. Sadly, we really didn't, the budget I proposed, in February, we were looking at a level service budget at a 5.1% increase. It didn't go over well with our communities. As we saw within the budgets that I presented you last week, the towns are earmarking us at a 5% assessment, which the 5% assessment is a real challenge to our district budget. Knowing that, and, you know, again, and I want to say thank you to Mary Beth and Lisa for providing me budgets and numbers so I can speak like I know what I'm talking about a little bit, and knowing where they're at, and we've had some good conversations. We might not agree where we're at right now, but I appreciate the transparency of having some numbers to work with. So I presented the committee some options for what that would look like if we come down from 5.13, all the way down to, and Hillary brought this up last week, saying, hey, you gave us these numbers, does that include unemployment? So the updated numbers include if we start reducing past people that are not employed as of June 30th or July 1st, 2024, we start getting into unemployment numbers. So the first line, again, I'm going to go over this, and still my recommendation, if we have to, if this committee needs to move away from the 5.13% assessment, I still recommend potentially using one-time funds. I know Justin doesn't like to hear that, but I'm going to recommend that or suggest that, using circuit breaker funds and not replacing my retirements slash non-renewals for a total of five positions cut, or that line of a total cut of $910,500, which would make our budget, overall budget, not assessment number, overall budget, 4.04% increase. Now, John did clarify for me, because I made a mistake. E and D isn't expenditures, it's revenue, so it doesn't, it affects how that budget looks, but not the assessments. So when I said, hey, if we use E and D, this is a cut, it's not, it's actually a revenue number. So that's why last week it was 3.65, it's 4.04, because we're actually using our own revenue to support the budget, if that makes sense. And if it doesn't, John can explain it a little more. But that assessment to the town of Whitman would be $19,135,687, or a 7.87% increase in their assessment, and the Hanson assessment of $14,974,736, or a 7.68 assessment. Then I do that line, because that's where it gets a little bit more uncomfortable. Cutting five positions in the district isn't awesome. There are retirements, and like I said, non-renewals, that we could probably get by. It won't be a tremendous increase of class size, however, services will be lost. It's not level service. Level service is taking what we have this year and putting it into next year. There will be five less people who are making their exit anyway, so it's not a pink slip, it's not, it's not an unemployment issue. But there will be five less people in the district, professional staff members, than this year. So when we get past that line, then we factor in unemployment, and unemployment is a 40% cost for every person that we pink slip as of the day that their contract is null and void, okay? So to get closer, again, trying to do it the best way I thought, would be kind of coming down a percentage at a pop. So getting the assessment down to a Whitman assessment of $18,917,397, or a 6.84 assessment, and a Hanson assessment of $14,838,25, or a 6.85% assessment, I would have to pink slip seven employees or let them go. Now, with that 40% unemployment, that's why we had to, it was a five number, yes?
Sure. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Fred, hold on. Fred, we had somebody already on the list.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. You want us, at this point in time?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I just ask if you can tell us what positions are the five retiring staff members from?
I'm not, I won't say that at this point, because it's retirements and non-renewals and replacements of those folks. So I don't know, I know who my retirements are, and they're retirements in elementary and high school.
And, but is it a classroom teacher?
They're all classroom, they're classroom teachers.
Because it could be a nurse in elementary?
It could be.
So, I'm sorry.
So, but that's, I need to have that flexibility in who I need to replace based on what we need next year. So I'm looking at five professional positions that are going to be lost.
Okay, and likewise, it could be in the budget book, in a maintenance staff member retiring. So this is why I ask, because it depends on the cost center, right? So if this is coming out of a teaching cost center.
These, right now, are all teachers.
Five retirements of teachers. They're not.
Five retirements plus some non-renewals or people moving on.
They're not just retirements.
Okay.
So they're non-renewals, which some of those people don't know that yet, so we can't say their names. We can't say the position, okay? Because they're not been notified. So the problem, I just want to interrupt for a second, I'll be right with you, Fred. The problem we have also is some information we won't have until April 1st.
Or later.
Or later, of people returning who might not want to return from maternity leave or things like that. We don't have that, but we have to set this today to submit. So things can change, but we don't know that at this time. That's, that's an issue, and that's, you know, where we have to look at. As far as with the unemployment, we wouldn't start unemployment until, well, until their contract ends, which is July 1st, everybody remember that. So that's a little bit different. It's not like as soon as this is done, we start their unemployment, because we don't. So.
But that is good information for folks to know. If a teacher doesn't have a contract as of June 30th, they're technically unemployed. So their unemployment starts, and I have to start, we start compensating July 1st, even if they're coming, until they get a notice back from me that they're back, or from another school district, or another place of employ that's equal to the salary that they were making here. And we learned that through COVID. And when we had the fiscal '21 budget in 2020, because I pink slipped 62 folks, because I had to, I didn't know what budget we were going to have, and people started collecting unemployment July 1st. So, and all those, most of those people came back or have found gainful employment. And the challenge of, I'm not trying to be shady, if that's a word, to say, I have retirements, and there are some retirements I'm going to fill, and there are some retirements I'm not going to fill. And it's just going to depend on enrollment and what numbers look like as we roll them out in scheduling with each building next year. And again, to be fair, there are folks here that might not be coming back because of certain evaluations, and they haven't been notified yet, and it's not appropriate to put them out there in public. So I'm looking at, if we go, and Fred had a question though. Joe, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Fred.
So just looking at the very first below-the-line statement of cuts, it was five staff originally, and now it's been increased to seven, and it shows unemployment, but if someone's retiring...
These aren't the retirements. These are now people.
Okay, so we're...
The additions are the five up top, so it's 12 really.
Right, but this is the up top, I thought.
No.
No. So it's five this way, and the subpositions are the opposite.
But this is proposed cuts using Indian Circuit Breaker.
Yeah, that's separate than the one we're talking about with the, that's separate from the unemployment one, Fred.
Okay.
Fred, that's the next number down.
All right, so that's the 56500 non-renewal replacements.
Those people don't, they're not entitled to the cost.
Right, that's right.
So we don't do, so we don't do unemployment on those. Yeah, we don't do unemployment on those.
Sure. And one of the things that if those folks, if we pink slip them and they find another job, that unemployment reduces, and that sixth or seventh teacher that was let go can potentially come back, you know? And I won't know that till the summer. But again, that gets us down to that critical assessment number of, for Whitman, 6.84, and Hanson, 6.85. If we did the top and the next layer, I called number, you know, two, total proposed cuts using E and D and Circuit Breaker, we have now cut the budget as presented on February 7th, 1.208,700, or $1,208,700. That's what we would be of use in E and D and proposed cuts. If we have to get closer to that five, and I didn't get to five, I only got to 5.58, because I stopped there, we're looking at an additional 8.5 staff members, which would reduce the Whitman assessment to $18,655,450, or a 5.58 assessment, and Hanson's number would be $14,673,972, or 5.85% assessment. With total reductions in that area, we're making our school budget a 2.95% increase over last year. And total proposed cuts using Indian Circuit Breaker of $1,570,800, or 20 professional staff member positions, and I'm saying professional staff members, not to shy away from paraprofessionals, but I have not looked at paraprofessionals. They are professionals as well, but these are teaching positions or district positions that I'd be looking at as far as 20.5. Classroom teachers, areas that support classroom teachers, and as I said last week, we won't be looking at interventionists for that position. People could bump into those positions, special education positions, or EL staff, because those are required, really by law, to make sure we have those supports in place. I had told the committee, and I shared with the district today, you know, where cuts could come from. The only where, way I could take cuts from, and if you're kind of reading between the lines a little bit, I'm looking at Conley, Indian Head, Hanson Middle School, Whitman Middle School at the grade levels. You can maybe assume that some of the retirements are coming from the high school, because they are, they're getting cuts as well. So those are, these are where the additional cuts could go, and they would increase class sizes. We have, as I said, admirable class sizes, and we work really hard as a community to service our students, especially in K to five, six through eight, with class sizes that are, K to five, really, 20 and under, six through eight, 20 to 22, and in the high school, around the 22 to 25. Cutting these positions here would bring almost every elementary and middle school class size to 25, with hopefully no move-ins. That's a guesstimate, but they'd be up to that level that we had pre-19. And a community member asked me today, were there any studies, and I thought this was a good question, were there any studies done about optimal class size? And I said, yeah, a lot before 2019, before 2020 and COVID. Said, nobody's really talking about that now, because kids are different. I said, 20, 25 in a high school class used to be pretty doable. It's still doable, but it's different. 25 in an elementary classroom was a little large, but still manageable. 20 is challenging now, and it is. And I'm speaking from somebody that has talked to quite a few classroom teachers. Is it doable? Absolutely. Our staff is good, and we have interventions. But George did mention last week, where we are progressing and educating our kids, all kids, and all kids are making gains, there will be a restructure of how that happens if we end up with 25 kids in a classroom and what that looks like. Will we service our kids? Absolutely. Will school open next year? Absolutely. Will that be a change in how we deliver services to our students? Absolutely. And are we in the same spot as we are every year? And there's a six-year running of what are we doing to cut and maybe do this and maybe do that? Yes. I think, I think if we want to have a good faith, and I've heard about good faith, if the committee wants to support the 4.04% increase of the budget with non-renewing, with the non-renewals and the retirements, I think that's really not affecting my K to eight students. Will it affect my 9 to 12 students? Somewhat. Is it more manageable? And I can speak as the former high school principal, I think it's doable. I've been there before, and that staff can handle it. I really get anxious about the service piece to students once we go below that and start moving five members, seven members, eight members, 10 members, and how that affects the students in the classrooms now. And like I said, I'm very confident in the professionalism of my staff, but they will have to teach differently. If we go from 20 to 25, the one-to-one interactions in a classroom is different. And again, I mentioned that to that community member. I used to teach high school and had a class at 27, but when you threw 30 in there, it was different. I could handle 27, believe it or not, but the three extra students just threw the game, and it depends on that student and the day of the week. The intervention piece and the supports we have through special education and English Language learner support is extremely helpful, and the wind blocks have been essential, but this will change. And I think doing our due diligence, we've worked really hard to be here, if the committee comes out and supports where we're at right now, I'd love to get the 5.3, but I also am realistic and don't want to seem like we're, you know, grasping. I'm not sure of the word. 5.3 is level service, we deserve level service, but this is where we're at, and this is a suggestion slash recommendation that I would have coming out of the gate. I also included in your packets, another question came from the members about class, where kids are at as far as ELs and special ed. class, where kids are at, as far as ELs and special ed. We're not cutting those because those are unknown numbers too. They're also challenged, they're, it's, it's challenging right now to service those students because that student population is growing more and more every day. And where we can cut right now are classroom teachers, related arts staff as we go, based again, what the team, when given the number, the final number from the district, we're at town meeting, my team will work together with the building principals and the association to make sure that students are serviced and, and we remove staff members equitably across the district. So that's where we're at.
Fred?
I believe it was last November, you know, that I said, if we want to fix it, we have to fix it right. And if we needed an override, we needed to have it structured so it's not a Band-Aid. As this budget is structured right now, if the selectmen or the FinCon have a separate line for an override for our portion, it's a Band-Aid. And we're back in the same position without adding the product or the programs that we should be doing, and let the taxpayers decide. You know, they're the ones footing the bill. They're the ones footing the bill. And it's up for us to make the case, this is what we should have, this is what we need to have. You know, languages in the middle schools, robotics program, as well as the other bits and pieces that are far beyond my grasp, and that's why we have a professional administration. But if we're going to do it, we need to do it right. And my fear is that we end up with a Band-Aid this year. And people are going to feel like, well, we just gave them money, and you're done for five years. That's my big fear. And we're talking about doing anything that the towns council support within their current operating budget. And I know both towns are in dire circumstances. You know, they allotted us money. Problem isn't the towns, problem's the state. It's the way they fund chapter seven. They give us a minuscule amount, they don't cover their percentage of any reasonable increase, and we're expected to move forward. You know, it's just, it's a horrible, horrible situation that was started.
David?
Thank you, Chair. So Fred, I, I think you made a lot of great points there. And one of the things Mr. Small just talked about was putting a Band-Aid on the budget. And I'd like to remind the committee of what we did three years ago. In March of 2021, the only time since I've been here that the committee unanimously supported the budget, the superintendent came out and said, this particular year, because of the pandemic, I'm requesting that we don't add any more services. So we supported the level service budget unanimously. A couple of weeks later, April 7th of 2021, the committee came back and the superintendent asked the committee for the sake of partnership to reduce our assessment by $775,000. What we did is take those mental health services, the interventionalists, and rolled it into, at that point in time, it was S R 2, which was state aid, basically, one-time funding from the state to help us during the pandemic. Anyway, the vote failed. It vote, it failed on a 6 to 1 vote. We came back the following week and the assessment passed on an 8 to 2 vote, myself being one of the committee members who voted against it, because I did not agree with the idea that we're taking one-time funding and putting it into our operating budget, knowing we're going to need long-term. One of the discussion points that was talked about during that meeting was putting a Band-Aid on the budget. And the understanding was that we are going to work with the towns for the sake of partnership with the idea of rolling over that funding into our operating budget when S R runs out. Now, flash forward to last year, we added, I believe, approximately 500,000 of E and D into the budget. I did not show up for that meeting, because it was to my knowledge, and we've talked about this publicly, that a predetermined deal was made on what that figure should be. So while I protest, I did not show up to that particular meeting. Another thing I'd like to point out as well, when we're talking about finances, we use the term "we" don't, but the town, the board of selectmen in particular, select boards like to use the narrative "school override." The way I perceive that is poor public policy on their end and a lack of accountability. Because when you're looking at the excess levy capacity, the two and a half that they've not utilized fully last decade, they left, the town of Whitman in particular, left $4.1 million on the table. Even if they collected half of that, we would not be in the position we are now. Look at 2016, they did not collect their levy, we had devastating cuts. Look at 2019, we lost 19.2 jobs. And when those 19.2 jobs went out, those pink slips went out, we had teachers crying in the building and to the point where the atmosphere was so depressing that students says, what the hell is going on? We need to get involved. So students then sent out a district email. None of the school committee members responded, but a parent did and talked to us about the levy and gave us that information and used that. And students then went and interviewed teachers throughout the district. And you know what these teachers told me? They told me they were going on Google to develop their curriculum. How quick we forget that it was just a few years ago that teachers did not have the tools they needed to succeed at the earliest levels, building the foundational blocks for our most important asset, that is our youth, our students. And let me remind you, folks, I went to the MASC/MASS conference meeting, the administration was there, and one of the things that they talked about is what is our role as school committee members? And I know it gets confused a lot of the times, but who are our constituents? Yes, we are elected by taxpayers, people who are old enough to vote, but our constituents are actually the students. And what we are looking to do is promote student achievement. So by doing this, by reducing our assessment, by cutting these jobs, we are once again bailing the community out of their lack of responsibility, and they want to, they want to blame the towns, they want to blame the schools and say, hey, this is your fault, when really they are not doing their job and utilizing the levy and following your own policy. Let's talk about the Madden Report. The Madden Report that was done in Whitman said an override was needed in FY '20 or FY '21. That was not done. And the reasoning for the override was so that all departments were adequately funded, which they wouldn't have to deal with if they properly collected the levy. Now let's look at Hanson. Hanson's not dealing with a school override, they're dealing with a $5 million operational override because they have not adequately collected their funds, and they need it to be able to support not just the school department, but all departments. So we can sit here and we take, contend, once again, take one-time funding, like we've done with E and D, like we've done with S R, like we've done with circuit breaker, kick the can down the road, but next fiscal year, when you're dealing with the problem again, you have no one to look at but yourself. So you can pride yourself being an accountant, a teacher, whatever your perspective is, but if you sit here and you cut these services, you're actually speaking louder than you were. So understand what we're doing with, what we're dealing with and how we got in this position. If you want to go further back in history, repeating itself, we are standing here in, in the midst of landmark state legislation. If you go back to 1993, when the, when the schools regionalized fully to be able to get that incentive of state aid, they were getting a bunch of contributions from the state in the late 90s, early 2000s. And what did they do with that opportunity? They didn't invest in education. The towns did not add anything to their contributions while the states did. Now, look at it, it's gone over the last 10, 20, 30 years. It's not just a vacuum of one single fiscal year. There's a lack of investment in our community that has put us in the situation where there is a great recession, the opioid epidemic, a pandemic, generations of students are suffering. I mean, look at me. People, I'm glad to be here, but it should be a little bit disgusting that a student feels they need to run to be able to bring change, and then even furthermore, that the community that elects them because they feel as if they have a better opportunity to bring change than the people who are currently sitting in that seat. That is a disturbing feeling, and people should really think about that for a little bit. So I ask you folks to really consider the last several decades, not just this one particular fiscal year, and make our responsible decision for our students. That is our constituents. Let's represent them, let's respect them, let's care about them. We've had a student advisory committee tell us for years that they need to be a student killing themselves. We've had friends, I've seen it for years, over and over. We need to support them. So do what is best, is, is best for our judiciary standpoint, is best for student achievement. We cannot turn our backs on our students, on our teachers who need us the most. So I ask you folks to listen to me, listen through the financial argument, the emotional argument, understand the human aspect of what we were just talking about, and support our students and support our community. The greatest asset we have in either Whitman or Hanson is our regional school district, and do not forget that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I agree with Fred. Doesn't make any sense to go to an override when we're providing a less than level service budget, right? I mean, when, it's like how many, the old expression, you know, you get a, you get one bite at the apple, right, for quite a long time probably. And so, it doesn't make any sense to me to, to, to cut this budget and then go and try to fund it through an override. So.
Can you ask, I don't mean to put Mary Beth and Lisa on the spot. With your five, or Justin or Sean, with, with the earmark of 5% right now in your budgets, are you level or are you in deficit still? I don't know. And I don't, if you can't answer that right now, if, with a 5% assessment from the schools, are your overall budgets still in deficit, or are they set? And again, if you don't know, that's fine, because we're still in the middle of it. But with the earmark as set, is there still a deficit in your budget? Do you still have to make cuts?
Mary Beth Carter?
Sorry, but.
Nope, that's okay. So, right now where I am, we plan to use 500,000 out of free cash, one-time money, which we don't want to do either. And so I'm almost there at level, using that with, with drastic reductions, of course, to what was requested.
Thank you.
Okay. Don?
Sure. So we have difficult decisions to make.
Can you help Lisa speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. Don, can Lisa speak to her?
Oh, yes, Lisa, right.
Thanks, Lisa, appreciate it.
I did go to the gym, so.
Good for you.
So right now, basically at the 5.85, we're still about almost a million in the deficit.
Lisa, could you talk into the mic first?
Oh, sorry. We would be about a million in the deficit. Our free cash is 1.4 million, so we would basically need to use most of that. Anything higher than that, pretty much is going to wipe out all our free cash. It gives us nothing for capital until October, until our new free cash. So regardless of what the schools do, we're at a deficit on all of those figures, which may be staff on our end as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Don, go ahead.
Thanks. So I was saying, we have difficult decisions to make. One question, just simply to ask, does this budget align with our goals and our strategic plan? Should be number one. I'm recalling last week when we were informed that the district had not invested in high-quality curriculum from 2001 to 2018. There was a comment superintendent made at a previous meeting also. We were content when he came up to central office with being marginal, right? Because that's what the district had been for two decades, marginal. When the pandemic hit and funding was available, he saw greatness, he saw improvement, and the potential that what funding does matter. So we are now faced with going backwards. You know, I, I think back also to 2005, this building was built, right? And at that time, the state aid from 1993, as a school committee member, fourth just mentioned, had started to dry up in the early 2000s. But the two towns invested in a building, in a high school. And they still call it the new high school, 2023, 20 years later. So, from that point, when this school building that we sit in was built, it was shiny, it was new. But what you weren't seeing were the cracks on the inside. The cracks on the inside were that curriculum was not being purchased, and I'm not going to pretend to know what else was going on, but we can see the trend that there was not an investment in curriculum technology moving forward. I still have some questions about the budget. And when we think about finding savings, I look at class sizes the way they are right now. And the comment was made that staff members may need to be removed equitably across the district. There are classes right now in our district that are 24 in the middle school. There are, I'm looking at these class reports that were provided to the committee. So, and there are eight classrooms in one of our middle schools that are already at 24. So the conversation just about a half hour ago was about if classes get up to there, it's, it's going to be a different story. Well, we're there now. We're there now in some classrooms with some teachers. At the same time, we have another middle school that right now has class sizes of 14, 15, 16. And there's another school that has 24. And that's not just one, that's eight different classes. So I do have to ask what the rationale would be to provide staffing right now in a non-Titel I school with 16 class size compared to a Title I school with 25% minority, students of color, and what the rationale would be right now with the, a first-grade teacher was pulled in a Title I school with population of 62 students. So if you had 62 students, first graders, and four teachers, that's 15.5 per class. But we don't have four teachers. We have 62 students divided by three teachers for 20.6 in a first-grade class in a Title I school. So, we have a middle school that has 14, 15, and 16 in eighth grade in a class. And that is acceptable right now, but we also made a decision for a first-grade class to have 20. So I see an inequity right now that needs to be addressed, and I don't know how that can be addressed and perhaps help alleviate this budget. I'm not saying where it should be. But that in itself, especially when one of the schools has 25% of the population is black, brown, Hispanic kids, that can create a disparate impact. It's not intentional by the district, but it causes an impact to a minority population. What I will say right now is this budget does not have the world language elementary or middle school, does not, and this is for listeners watching, this does not expand world languages, even at the high school. We don't have Mandarin, we don't have Portuguese second language to be bilingual for our English speakers. We don't have Arabic, we don't have Latin. Many area schools do. We don't have robotics, it was mentioned, in elementary or middle school. We don't have a fine and visual performing arts director, K through 12. We don't have a full-time drama teacher staff, which some towns have an elective as drama during the school day. This budget does not include a funding line for laptops or curriculum, that I noticed. Correct me if I'm wrong. Page six of document 11 says we're cutting $40,000 in laptops. Now, they may all be working now, and, and we may be set and there's a replenishment, but at some time, that funding line is going to have to be filled. But right now it's 40,000. We're not funding our OPEB, and we're not funding equitable class sizes, as I mentioned. So, I did vote no on, on paying for the 250,000 in buses, because I do believe that students can arrive safely to school. But when we make sure that they all get here on a bus and there's higher class sizes like that, that's a decision this committee will make. So I, I would just really like to, to find out about the rationale with class sizes, the way they are right now, because it's, it's not equitable.
So, I think I can hopefully provide some insight on the rationale for class sizes. Every principal of a school is charged with educating the students the best that they can. Now, when it comes to the Hanson Middle School, that's what we're talking about versus the Whitman Middle School, you have a unique situation in the demograph, not the demograph, in the makeup of the staff at the Hanson Middle School. And the reason being is that they have teachers who are in transition. Some are at the end of their career and experienced, some are coming in. But what that allows the principal to do, and it's a unique situation, and they have dwindling population, but what that allows the principal to do is, if you have veteran teachers who've been working for a long time, they have what's called a K to six certification. So what Mr. Tranther has been able to do is to take those individual certifications and sort of make a teacher teach more than one subject to reduce class size. So for example, in the sixth grade, he has five sections in the sixth grade. Now, what he does though is make, so let's say it's Mr. Boyce and he's got a K to six. Mr. Boyce might teach four sections. He might teach four sections of one subject, one section of another subject. The state allows you to do that because you have a K to six certification. So then he's able to then lower class size because he makes people teach out of their subject area, extra sections are created. So you take that 100 kids and you divide it by, or 110 kids and you divide it by six. So you get more. The issue that happens in the seventh and eighth grade, and I agree with you, and I have the numbers going into next year with cuts, if you'd like to hear those too. The issue going into seventh and eighth grade is that he has what's called a split team. So a split team is, he has teachers that teach the four subjects, because again, this is not elementary school where it's, I teach my students only all subjects. In a middle school, you have teams that teach one social studies, one teacher teaches science, one teacher teaches ELA, one teacher teaches math. And then, so what he does there, they have a split team. So it's like four in seventh, four in eighth, and then they have these four teachers that try to, that. four in eighth, and then they have these four teachers that try to, that teach extra classes, two to the seventh and two to the eighth, and he's able to mix them up. Now, the issue is it lowers class size. You could wipe that whole team out, because again, it's springtime in Whitman-Hanson, and I've done this now for my 21st spring, and in the spring of 2007, that's what happened at Whitman Middle School. We lost the split team. So, we had lower class size. The superintendent at that time said, "We're removing those four people," and we automatically shot up in class size by about nine to 10 per class because I no longer had those sections. So, when we look next year at the seventh and eighth grade, if you have, they have split, and if you cut some of those splits, you're looking at 124 seventh graders next year in Hanson Middle. And this is hard to wrap your mind around if you're not sure, and I'm probably going to do a lousy job of explaining it, but I'll give it my best shot. If you have a team of four teachers, right? If you, I mean, excuse me, if you think of the four academic subjects, at the seventh grade next year in Hanson Middle School, he will offer three courses with six sections each. Now, understand that. So, let's say it's English, it's math, and it's social studies. But if you drop one of those teachers, you now only have four sections of science because you cut a teacher. So, in your class sizes, you'll be averaging 20 in the seventh grade in those subjects with the six sections, but you'll be averaging already 28 in the science and 31 in the science because you've reduced those sections. So, instead of spreading kids to six, you now only spread them to four because you cut a teacher. If there are two cuts at the Hanson Middle School next year, you're looking at raising your numbers into the 30, you know, well into the 30s for those subjects. The hard part is, is that you only have a limited number of teachers and sections, and every year, there's a limit, there's a different number of kids that go in there. But the reason why is because you have a principal and assistant principal who can manipulate the certifications under DESI, and he's trying to do the best he can for those. On the other half, in Whitman, you have high enough numbers that you have two full teams at every grade. So, if you think about it, you have eight teachers in grade six that teach academics. You have two math, two reading, two ELA, two science, same in seventh, same in eighth. So, you divide that number by eight. Because of the dwindling population in Whitman, you don't have that two-team system. So, the principal now has tried to manipulate everything he can with his schedules. There can definitely be cuts, but that explains the inadequacy of what's going on because you're taking teachers who have different certifications and using those certifications to what the state allows to create more sections for students to lower class size.
And I'll add to that, too, George. I think that's an important, that's really important to hear for people, that I was certified K to eight, which is no longer two. And so, I could move different grades, any grade. I started with fourth, I ended up with six, and then went to eight and back to six. And I think that that's really important because if somebody's only K to six, really, by DESI standard, you can only teach six, you know, five or six, grade five or six. So, you can't go to, you know, you can teach any subject in that, but you can't go higher. So, it really does restrict. Not only is he able to move him around, it also restricts him to what those people can do.
And it's unique in a middle school, not a high school, because a high school, you can cut, if you have 10 teachers in math and you cut nine, you take every kid that takes math, and now they go into nine sections instead of 10. But if that kid's teacher is cut, you might get a study hall, or you might get a free, or you might get a different, or you might get to choose an elective. There are no electives to choose in a middle school because every student has to have every offering that every other student has, so it is really a puzzle. So, when you're talking about cutting at a middle school, the easiest thing to do, which would be definitely not good for education at all, was to rip out his whole split team, just like we did at Whitman Middle years ago. But, you know, the more we do, the more we should know better. Do I agree that there's less class size at Whitman, at Hanson Middle School? I do. Do I agree that there's other challenges at Whitman Middle School? I do. But however, that's the reason why, is because they're at a precipice of pull it all out. If they drop another 15, you'll be fine. They'll have high, same class size, lose those teachers. But it doesn't work that way presently now.
Yes, Don.
I think I'd just like to add on the end, the classes, again, right now at Whitman Middle School, to equal what grade eight Hanson Middle School is, you'd need to add three teachers. That's, to do the math, you'd need to add three teachers to get the equivalent. So, when we're talking about equity, I just still can't believe we're at this point that, you know, an eighth-grade class is smaller than our first grade in a Title I school. So, that's frustrating. And I know we sat here a year and a half ago in the fall and were surprised when a parent came up and said the buses were cut at Indian Head. We used to have 12, they were cut to eight. And I was surprised because the committee hadn't been informed of that. And then to learn this past fall that paraprofessionals weren't restored in full-day kindergarten classes when they used to always have a para designated to every kindergarten class. So, I'm hoping that we can, and this speaks to why I specifically asked about those five retirements. I really want to be able to understand what I'm voting for, what the impact is going to be on the students. So, it's, my focus is on the students and student achievement and maintaining equity. And when we're not even looking at fairness, I mean, we need to consider that Title I schools and the population within those schools and the English-language learners.
Yeah, so, I've been around a little bit now, and I've come to understand that we hire a superintendent, and he works with his staff, to make the best decisions they can for the students. We entrust them with that. We aren't privy, nor should we be, to every individual factor, you know, that goes into their decisions. They have things they have to work through, some of which can't be presented publicly out of respect and consideration for the teachers involved, the potential teachers involved. So, I don't know. I think we, as a school committee members, we should absolutely continue to advocate for the students and the district in general, but we need to understand that we're not superintendents, we're not assistant superintendents, we're school committee members. And furthermore, we're one of a group of 10. So, we have to keep that in mind as we go through this process, as far as I'm concerned. That's how I see it.
Yeah, Fred.
I agree with Mr. Scriven. You know, as I think I tried to avoid to, we're not educators. You know, a lot of the decisions that they make are far above our heads in our pay grades, so to speak. We do entrust them. There are certain factors of the budget that I think we have the right to ask for, you know, in understanding how the soup is made a little bit, but it's up to administration to make the soup. That's what they're hired to do. My biggest problem is we know that we've been allotted up to a 5% increase year after year for our assessment increase. I've heard from folks saying, you know, perhaps, "Well, the Madden Report says that we were doing override." Would that have changed the 5% a lot? I don't know. And we know what the towns have penciled in and budgeted, you know, for our, you know, assessment increase. I would hope that, you know, they have specific guidelines, and I believe they do, you know, for the other departments. It's a tough, tough year. I think that what we do, and for it to affect other departments in public safety, DPW, library, you know, any town entity would be unfair to them because the schools say, "We need more, and we didn't plan properly for an override," et cetera. That, you know, can go right to the people and ask for it. I just wanted to bring that up. You know, I would not be in favor of, you know, putting this on other people within our town and seeing people lose their jobs because we're trying to hold to a line, so to speak.
Yeah, Hillary, head next. Hillary.
I think it's really dangerous when we start to pit departments against each other, particularly a department that services people who don't have a voice, which are the kids. That's who we are representing, that's who we serve. We, this is my fourth budget, and I've never certified a budget in March, whenever we certify them, that has maintained that budget. We have been asked to cut every year for the last four years that I have been here. Last year, we had a joint meeting. I'm not sure I would call it a joint meeting because none of us were able to speak. We just sat there, and we're berated by both select wards about our irresponsibility and how we are spending. What I don't hear and what I didn't hear is why? Why do you need this money? We are not asking to institute AP Chinese. We are not asking to put foreign language back in the middle schools. We're not asking for robotics. Last year, we were told asking for robotics was absolutely irresponsible. We're asking for basic needs and services of kids, adequate class size. So, Malcolm Gladwell, I think in 2018, did a study podcast, optimum class sizes are between 18 and 24. Anything less than that, you become like a family, you fight, it's not great, anything more than that, and it's too much to handle. Now, you know, teachers, we can do it, but does that mean it's the right thing to do? It's not. I said last week, we had this amazing presentation that our students are making gains because of what we have done, because of what we have added. We did not take ESSR funds and add foreign language to the middle school. We did not take ESSR funds and hire a K to 12 drama teacher. We did not do, that would be irresponsible, those things would be irresponsible. We took ESSR funds, and we funded positions that, I was looking, I think legally, we probably had to fund six or seven of those positions anyway, or we would be violating civil rights. So, let's just talk about that, right? We're not asking for an exorbitant budget. We are not like, you know, in the Globe, there was an article about Harvard and Bedford and how they have these massive overrides. You know what they have in those districts? A K to 12 theater director, AP Chinese, Mandarin. I teach in Pembroke down the road. In Pembroke, students can take, they can start practicing a string instrument in fourth grade. So, we're not just talking trumpets and saxophones, we're talking violins, cellos. They, at the high school, have the opportunity to take one of four foreign languages. They have the opportunity to enroll in one of eight pathways. This is just around the corner, right? So, when they have to cut a million dollars, there are places to cut. We don't have anything extra in our budget to cut, we don't. I mean, these renewals and retirements, okay, but 20 staff, when we're looking at class sizes, like, it, no one has asked the question, "Why do we need this?" No one has asked that question. We had the data last week, it is working. What we are doing is working. We have not been irresponsible with what we have done. We have provided for what the students need. We received on the school committee a great email, but a very depressing email today from a Hanson resident. She started the email by saying that in her 18 years here, all she has seen is the town cut, closing in the McQuon School, moving the fifth grade, cutting foreign language. Nothing has been added. I feel like I'm bashing my head against the wall because three years ago, we had these subcommittees, and we're going to get related arts, and we're going to get these things back. I mean, Jeff, you said, "I'm going to cut a related art teacher," and my comment was "Related arts, what related arts do we have?" I wrote that. We don't have any to cut, like, so, I just think that that needs to be the conversation when we're going to the towns and we're saying, "We need this." We're not asking for, you know, again, I'll use the AP Chinese, right? We're not asking for that. We're asking for basic services for our students and our staff that they need. And in that email that we received today, we learned that her two students do not attend Whitman-Hanson schools because of the lack of opportunities. So, that is two less students that we have. So, we talk about lower enrollment, what's bringing kids here? Why are they coming? Why are they coming? We have to get our enrollment up for Chapter 70 and Hold Harmless, and we're cutting. Why are people going to come? Why? That, you know, like, those are questions that no one is asking. They just see the number, "No, we can't do it." Enough said. And I just am very frustrated by that.
Majority of you remember, pardon my stuffed-up head again, the $800,000 that ends. So, tomorrow, they're taking the solace, especially, and how are you all going to support? That would panic you. But you didn't think about the $800,000 plus that we started without because it's gone. It's no longer a yearly thing. It's no longer something that supports our essentials. So, that's what we're starting with. So, you can get up and hold your VS through the microphone all you want, and I still love you all dearly because you went with me and whatever, but it's not, that's not what it is. Look at what it actually is. You start, $800,000 down. We're mentioned there for three meetings. Well, maybe we need a neon sign. We're not going to buy one, but it is cardboard equivalents. But you know, that's what it is.
Okay. Sean?
I will, as I had stated before, that I, oh, Glenn, let Sean speak first, and then I will get back to you, sorry.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Three minutes.
I think if I had to frame the budget, I think I would stop by framing it this way, you know, to help with some trends. And David, that was a passionate, you know, passionate remarks, and definitely, I felt If we look at the last 10 years or so, enrollment has been dropping, which really has been the impetus to thrust us into this Hold Harmless situation. That situation has had a number of effects on us, I think, both in Whitman and in Hanson. In Whitman specifically, we would look at things like excess level capacity and say, "Are we doing this properly, and what can we do to improve?" You know, so, towns have been scratching their head thinking, "How can we get more efficient?" And obviously, you guys have too. We could go through a laundry list of things where, you know, we systematically have identified ways in which we can become more efficient in both the district and the towns. So, that Hold Harmless trend has really driven us towards this really high, to be really highly efficient. I think that's one thing that people should know, that both in Whitman and Hanson and in the district, we've gone to great lengths to make sure that we're spending the dollar, like, everything out of the dollar that we have. Also, when you look at that Hold Harmless situation and the drop in enrollment, there are benefits that the district has reaped from that, weird side benefits of like the student-teacher ratio. That is much better now than it was when we sat in this room with Dr. McEwen with the Phoenix Project, whatnot. The student-teacher enrollment at that time was terrible, and now it's much, much better, you know, as a weird side effect of that Hold Harmless situation. You also gave a presentation where there was some things that have been added over the last couple of years that you're proud of, and I think you should be proud of. So, I think what you guys are also mentioning is the other side of the list where the laundry list of things that you want to add. So, I think the question before us now is, how do we keep moving forward? How do we, how do we keep kind of slowly moving forward so that we are at this point where we're super efficient and we want to keep going forward? We can't get everything on the list all at once, but five, 10 years from now, how do we systematically keep checking those things off the box so that in time, we're systematically making those gains? And I think that's, that's kind of how I would frame the budget. Today, as we sit, I do think the override, the reason the override is so difficult for the towns, or I guess, this is my personal opinion, it's because we're still in the Hold Harmless situation, although that might end. If that, if that was to end next year, which it may, you know, student trends have been stabilized. If it was to stabilize next year, the year after, the whole conversation shifts. Everything that we're talking about right now changes, and we're now in more of a growth mode. You know what I mean? But we're at the critical point after 10 or 11 years, we hold everything, we're bare-bones, all three of us, and we're super efficient, so we don't have any place else to go. You know, we're really at a critical point where it's kind of a breaking point. I don't want to be dramatic, but it feels to me kind of like a breaking point. So, I think the best thing we can do is get on the same page and move forward together so that we can get past this in a way that the community will accept. Highlight the positive things that we've done, the efficiencies that we have, and then a path forward that we can embrace together. path forward that we can embrace together.
Next.
Go ahead, Fred.
Madam Chair.
You got Glenn first?
Let him go ahead, Fred.
Or Mr. Kane.
Sean, Fred has a question for you.
Through the chair. You had mentioned a number earlier of new growth, and I just want to make sure, you know, I remember, you said 1.2 million?
No. Our new growth, usually, we...
Justin mentioned it.
Are we familiar with new growth?
Justin mentioned it.
Justin said 1.2 million.
It's okay.
New revenue.
New revenue.
Two and a half, probably two and a half plus new growth is projected at 1.2 million. Our new growth for next year is looking around 200, maybe 250,000. We had a big year last year. We're expecting a drop off this, just for us.
But for FY '25?
For FY '25, our principal assessor is telling us to project between 200, 250,000 for new growth.
New growth.
For new growth. So even all of the new growth, plus the 2.5% the district can get on top of there, 18, 17 something million last year.
It's now... So revenue issue from the towns as well. You don't have so much money as well.
Okay, thank you. Glenn?
I just want to clarify.
Okay. I hear everything you guys are saying, Don. I hear what you're saying about classroom sizes. Hillary, I hear what you're saying about, you know, what we don't have, what we should have, and what other towns do have. And Dave, I love your passion, you know, and I love that you care so much about the kids. But we weren't elected only by the parents of students. We were elected by the elderly couples on fixed budgets, you know. We were elected by people trying to make their mortgage. So what we're here to do tonight, I guess, is to push this thing forward, so, because we have to. We have to go forward. And I personally, I would love to say, level services, you know, with that, move it forward, and then it will go to... Where will it go from here?
Town meeting.
Town meeting, and then that, then the community will vote on that. And it's their money, you know? We're like a poorly run business that without an infusion of cash, we're going under, you know? And that's how... I just hate how the whole thing gets run. It's like we're playing with other people's money, because it just doesn't matter. It's not mine.
So just to answer, and that's the frustration, I think, the committee has, and Fred, and everybody here, the state has infused us, and I know, I agree with Don, the hold harmless piece, but the cash that we see?
Is not coming.
Is $110,000.
And if I ran a business and I expected some money that wasn't coming, I'd find something else, or I'd close.
So our budget went up 5%, whatever, and it goes on the towns, and I'm super... I feel for the towns, because we got a .0001% increase from the state.
But the town has the right to make that decision, not us.
Correct. But that's what I'm saying. When you say poorly, you're counting on something.
And to protect the kids, I think we should stay at level services and move it to the town, and let them decide what happens from there. Because this all, what we don't have, what we do have, these hypotheticals, none of us are going back in time to fix these things. You know, we showed up, or we bought a broken business, and, you know, this is where we're at. Let's move forward, please. Thank you. That's it.
Make it short and sweet.
Sure. We hear it every year. I always talk about partnership. I mentioned Band-Aid.
I love you. I love you dearly, Bob.
We hire a superintendent, right? We hear it every year. We hire a superintendent. We... The superintendent said, two meetings in a row, what we need as a district, what we need is a level service budget. And I want to remind the committee, as Hillary mentioned before, Hillary, thank you for your remarks greatly. Every year, we seem to lower the assessment, right? You can always lower it, but once you lower it, you can't raise it back up.
Right.
So remember that before you go and make a decision. I know we just lost two of them, but, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
May I ask?
Well, we lost... Yes, Stephen.
I don't... I'd like to see... It seems like the cause of this is the state. They created this.
Yep.
If we could get the towns somehow, the towns and the school committee, like, we focus our attention. We have to get through where we are now. We have, but it has to be focused towards the cause of the problem, and the cause of the problem is the state. So if we can all have that one focus, to... It seems like when the state gives money, there's always strings attached.
Yes.
And it's a way of controlling, and that's the way I feel about certain mandates and things like that. So, but obviously, level services is the... Again, you don't want to go backwards. We're seeing results. And again, there's a look at the finances. It's all... You have to take that realistic look, too. You know, in our community, there's all, there's mixed. There's the homeowners, there's the people barely getting by. So we all have an understanding of that. But if our focus can be towards the cause, I don't know how, you know, but it seems like more government involvement in pretty much anything, the taxpayer suffers.
Well, we did send the letters to our reps and senators, you know, explaining our situ... You know, because we have so many mandated items that they don't reimburse. If they're mandated, they should be...
If they're mandated, they should be responsible for it.
Give us the money, and they don't. It's even like when we became a region years ago, it was 100% transportation reimbursement, 100%. I don't know if, on one hand, I can count how many times it was ever 100%.
It was never... I've heard that discussion.
I think it was once.
Not, not.
I thought it was maybe once, when it first started.
Maybe, maybe years, years, years ago.
Yeah, years ago, in 93. But, so, you know, if they gave us what they had, when we signed up to be a region, the whole region, because the high school already was, that's what we signed up for, and they haven't come through.
It was just that initial one time.
Well, and even if they didn't, I don't even know if they did. I thought there was once that we did, but, I mean, they've gone, you know, it's gone closer, you know, but then it goes, it's gone way down, like, last year. Last year was our lowest, I think.
Yes. We've had lowest. I mean, we've had 64%. Last year was 75 transportation reimbursement, give or take, you know, and this was budgeted for that to share. I mean, that could come back. I did forward, everyone, Don had mentioned, fighting the inflation gap. Mary Bork, our co-chair, or co-president of, or co-executive director of MASSS, has gone to the legislature and I forward you a response that I just got during this meeting, so you can see that. Because if they, if Chapter 70 does adjust for inflation, this committee can always come back if we get more money and lower that assessment up to town meeting. I don't know, but I would say, I'm not counting on that, you know? We've talked about, in my superintendent's group, asking not only for the cost of living or inflation, but looking for $100 a student. We got $30 a student this year, last year, and Steve, you made the comment, you know, there's always a string attached with the state money. So we, they moved it to $60 a student last year, and as Mr. Stambrick was doing the money, charter school tuition went up. So we got $30 a student, and then charter school tuition went up that year. So it was like, you take your 30, and you take your 30. So we get it and spend it. And it never came to the district. So the, not saying it's a chill game, but it's kind of a, there's strings everywhere attached. So, you know, I would encourage a level service budget, as I said, on February 7th. February 7th, that's what we had.
Chris.
Thank you. Win, right?
Just real quickly, Steve, I couldn't agree with you more. But I think what you're going to find is, getting anybody to jump on that train and, you know, hit the State House, it's going to be difficult, right? What kind of bothers me is, when we have an opportunity to have Rep. Sullivan and Senator Brady here, I feel like it's more like a jovial, like, hey, how's it going? We're on the same team, right? Like, if you remember when I asked them specifically, what do you do to advocate for public education? You could sense a little bit like, well, we do this, and this, and that, like... That's, I think, what we got to do, is start putting pressure on our reps and not, you know, have it be nicey-nice. Because we're in a predicament, and we see it every single year. And we need leadership to step up and not be so concerned about what the optics are, but to do what's right. I just recall that charting the course and seeing the pie chart of the Chapter 70 money and just how much Worcester got. I know it's more populated, but not, it's the percentage as to, say, a town, something our size, was miniscule compared to...
But they're still not getting all that they need.
I'm sorry?
Worcester, Rockton, they're still not getting all that they need. Yeah.
Okay. Stephen?
I just wanted to report, there's an actual Band-Aid on the wall down the hall.
Oh, it's gross in there right now. It's really hot.
Okay. So what I'm looking for at this point, we are on... Oh.
Can I just...
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I just ask a procedural question?
Yes.
So if we vote for the level serviced budget, and it's beyond what the towns have told us?
Right.
Because I think that that's an important part. We haven't, and I know you've had discussions, but again, there has not been a work-together conversation.
No, but that happened. That's what they were talking about after.
Right, but it didn't happen last year either, right? It hasn't happened. It didn't happen last year. That was not a conversation. It was not a work-together conversation.
Was this the one at the town hall?
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about.
And so, so what, procedurally, what is that, what's that going to look like? So we certify?
Well, we can certify what we want, and then we take part or not take part in a conversation with the towns.
Okay.
You know, and that's up to us.
So that's kind of where we would be?
Yeah, you would, I would hope that we would have that conversation, but that's just me, and I hope it would be a conversation.
Right.
This year. I think everybody's been pretty eloquent about why we need the level service and what's lacking, and I think everybody here has made their point. So we do have... Did you have these passed out?
Yeah, we can do that. John, are you good with the level service number?
Because I, we have the... Do you want the papers?
Just the way it is, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I have it. I have it here, but, yeah, but, do you want me?
Yeah, you can pass it up if somebody...
I don't have it. Jen?
Can you give them to the committee members?
Jen is going to give you the papers, and in parentheses, it's going to say what the level service number is at the bottom, okay? So if that's what you're going to make, if that's the motion, or if it's a different number, I need to know that.
Thank you.
What is it, Don?
Procedural question, too, regarding E and D. I think in the past, that has to be voted separately?
Yes, it's...
From this?
You'll see it's in there.
Okay. Because if I may have a quick comment about E and D, and our balance again is 760,000, is, Superintendent, is there any opportunity in this budget for you to find the 250,000 in non-teaching, non-student affected cuts? I'm talking about supplies, other lines, because using E and D is extremely dangerous.
Right, but for level services, we're not using E and D, right?
Right, this is...
If we're going by level service, we're not. If we're going with that, the first line here cuts 900,000 off.
I'm talking about a strict budget that we presented at opening day.
Oh, you're talking about February 7th?
Correct. If that's the level service budget, John has those numbers for you.
All right.
I think they're on the page.
And if you look, if you just got a paper, you'll see that that is, I'll put my glasses on here, 63,590,845 dollars. That is the current budget amount.
Is that correct, John?
Yes.
Beth, can you say that aloud again?
Yep.
I'll let you know if it is.
Okay, thanks. I'm reading what you wrote. 63, it's 63,590,845. Yes, David?
I move to certify the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Fiscal Year 2025 Budget in accordance with the PK-12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4 E2 in Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16B, at 63,590,845 dollars.
Second.
Okay. All right, we've had discussion, so let's take a vote on that amount and start there. All those in favor of that amount, please raise your hand. Okay. All right. And against, opposed, one. Okay? All right. So that's where we are. Okay, on the next page, you will see...
Don, a question.
I was trying to make a motion to reconsider that vote.
Okay.
So...
You want to explain what that, a motion to reconsider?
Motion to reconsider is to do the same vote again, to reaffirm it, so that it cannot be changed in the future.
Second.
Okay, so it can't be changed?
That's my understanding, a motion to reconsider.
Yeah. But it can be adjusted? Can it be adjusted?
Not after, if I, now going back to Robert's rules, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, if we vote to reconsider something that's already been voted, that can't be changed because it's been reconsidered. And I, and I, can't quote me on that, but that's what I tend to remember, but I'm not sure.
Looking on... That's town meeting.
What's that?
Someone tells us we can do one.
Right, on a different number, correct?
Oh, okay, so, but on this, this is what we're certifying tonight, Don. Okay. Fred?
Should we discuss whether or not we're using any E and D funds first? Does that change that number?
Apparently not. We're not, because this is the...
We already voted.
We are, this, what we just voted, does not use any E and D.
No, I realize.
Yeah. Well, we can come back and always do the E and D.
Not if we go with her reconsider.
No, because you can make a motion.
If we come up with a new number.
A new amount.
We come up with a new number later.
I'm not confident on that. I don't know if the rest of you are.
Yeah.
I don't, I...
We're voting the budget.
Pretend to be an expert.
Yeah.
But I don't, I hesitate to...
Right, you could vote that down.
It needs a second. If it doesn't get a second, it doesn't move forward, so...
If it did a second...
Oh, I'm sorry.
But, well, it's the same, we can always review the legal.
But we need to set an assessment.
No, we don't have the time. We don't have the time to do that. Okay, so we do have votes. Who would like to vote yes to not reconsider? Okay, so this is...
The motion is to reconsider.
The motion is to reconsider.
So yes vote, you reconsider. No vote, you don't want to reconsider.
Which one?
Hold on one second.
Which one allows us to change it?
Not to reconsider. Don't reconsider.
If you vote no right now?
It's permanent.
No.
No. If you, yes, it's permanent.
Okay.
According to Don.
Okay.
Positive is permanent.
Feel like I'm being tricked.
Could be, is what our understanding is.
Yeah, but we have to go by it. Okay, we have to go by what we're saying tonight.
No, just make a choice.
Right, I don't like, I don't like the idea that it can't be...
Michelle has a question.
Yes, Michelle.
I was wondering why we need to, why we'll go through this again this night?
Because somebody requested it.
Okay.
Because, so that we can't change it, and we can't do any meeting with the towns or anything, and we'll keep it the same. Okay? All right, so we have on a motion to reconsider and a second by David. All those in favor of reconsidering, raise your hands. And opposed? Okay. One for, nine against. Okay? So that means we could, in the future, reconsider.
So before you get to the assessment piece of it, because that's the next piece, we've affirmed the budget, let me, correct me if I'm wrong, John, to go to Fred's comment about E and D. The budget wouldn't change if we use E and D. The assessments would change if we use E and D. So you've affirmed a budget, and if you so choose to use E and D to lower the assessments...
We can vote that at a separate time.
You can do that at a separate time.
Which we have done before.
Which we have done.
We have done that.
And you've also voted to, you know, potentially lower the budget and the assessments as we go. But right now, you have a budget that was affirmed, without use of E and D, without use of any external revenues other than what was presented.
And it can't go up, but it can always go down.
Could, that would be great.
Sean?
Just a clarifying question. Was that vote with the intention of, I don't understand that we need to go for an override, and we'll talk about how to structure that, or was it, no?
I don't think that was...
That wasn't part of it, but that doesn't mean that...
Generally speaking...
I will have a conversation with the two town administrators.
Thank you.
About that, yes. Yes.
Is it our business to ask for an override, or is that something that's town business?
No, we have to, but we discuss...
Can we recommend it or, like, I don't understand where we come into that.
We can come into the discussion. We come into the discussion.
If asked, not, we can't butt ourselves into it.
It's the nature of the partnership.
It's the partnership.
They like to butt us into it. I said, they like to butt us into it, but we actually don't vote on override. They do.
That's my point. That's our, now it's our.
But he would like, no, because we have to still, you know, possibly have a meeting and discuss and, you know, or some of us or whatever.
Have to or can?
Can.
Can.
Barry? This, the cooperation that we've gotten from the towns this year as opposed to previous years? Is remarkably different.
I'm all for cooperation.
So I think it's in that spirit? That we're saying, this is what we're voting on? And we plan to talk to the towns, you know, in the future about what, what that might look like in terms of an override.
And I think an override is going to happen no matter what.
Okay. So on the next page is the debt assessment first, okay? So this is the debt from the high school and?
John.
John?
High school debt.
High school debt and?
Yep.
For Hanson, it is the high school debt and also the H grad debt for middle school.
Okay, and for Whitman?
For Whitman, it is the high school. And for a projected on anticipation of debt to include the middle school building project.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion for, for, and I'll let whoever motions can read the motion. So that's for Hanson debt assessment. Somebody like to motion?
I move to set the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Fiscal Year 2025 debt assessment for the town of Hanson in accordance with the PK 12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4 E2 Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16B at 251,903.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous? On the Whitman debt assessment?
I move to set the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Fiscal Year 2025 debt assessment for the town of Whitman in accordance with the PK 12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement, Section 4 E2 and Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16B at 623,531.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, unanimous? We're going to pass over the E and D at this time because we do not need to. And we will go to the operating assessment. And these are the numbers on here? All right. David, you want to? Sure, go ahead.